Good evening. Thank you all for being patient with the Public Works presentation. We do have a short announcement before we start the meeting this evening. Attorney Captain?
Thank you.
Oops, we've got to turn you on though here. There we go.
Thank you. We do have an interpreter here this evening who will be using American Sign Language during the meeting, so if I can remind everyone to ensure or make sure that there is only one person that is speaking at a time, that should not be a problem. People have to be recognized before they can speak, but the interpreter obviously can only interpret one person speaking at a time. Thank you.
... announce that we have a new coach for Green Bay.
So with that, we'll call the City of Manassas' common council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oops, James.
I would like to take a moment of silence for longtime businessman in Manassas, Bob Beekler, who passed away this weekend. Thank you.
If we could have the roll, please. Oops, are we not?
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Krueger.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
First item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If you'd like to make a comment, if you could step forward to the microphone, we would need your name and address for the record, and I will hopefully turn the microphone on. That's the wrong one. There you go. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor and Common Council, hi, my name is Jim Baggett. I'm an engineer with Kimberly-Clark. I live at 848 Nicolay Boulevard. It's corner of Nicolay and Willow Lane. I'm here to discuss opposition to the Willow Lane sidewalks. I've been working with my neighbors and residents of Willow Lane on this issue and other issues on Willow Lane associated with a street resurfacing project. The other issues are significant drainage issues on the street which cause excessive road erosion, ponding, and slipping hazards. Adding sidewalks could make these worse. The existing sidewalks suffer from this issue already, especially when it rains a lot, continuous drainage over the sidewalks, they form algae, and it's a slipping hazard. The other issues we discussed in our meeting the other night was sinkhole at 315 Willow on the terrace, maybe due to the water main, and a desire for folks as you do the resurfacing projects to put electrical cables, et cetera, underground. I have a list of the folks that attended that discussion the other day for you. As far as sidewalks, I understand part of the reason the Public Works Department proposed the sidewalk extension is for safety. Safety is a concern for all of us. Willow Lane is not a high-traffic area, as noted by the Public Works Director, and also noted that it does not meet the requirements for sidewalks in the city's sidewalk policy for existing developments. Besides, a lot of people in our neighborhood prefer to walk in the street, whether it's Willow Lane, Nicolay, Kai's, et cetera. For improved safety, I would propose painting a line down the street, the one side of the street, to indicate a walking and biking lane, along with signage to caution folks and to make them aware of the speed limits in the area. That was done, I worked with the City of Nina at the end of Nicolay Boulevard to paint a white line in the street to show the curve and to put proper signage there to prevent people from driving in the lane. This is much more cost-effective and helps protect all. It also retains the feel of our neighborhood that we enjoy. I have surveyed the city, and here is a map of the city. I've highlighted in yellow the areas without sidewalks. You'll see a number of these are also close to schools and parks and recreational areas. I propose the city conduct the proper traffic and safety studies to determine the greatest needs for sidewalks and safety improvements. A number of these streets are near schools, as I said, city parks, or are highly-traveled roads, such as Plank, Valley, Manitowoc, Oneida, and Appleton. I believe this would have a greater impact on safety and be a better use of our tax dollars. I've also noted a number of existing sidewalks in our neighborhood with tripping hazards and damage. List of them here with locations. I've also noticed around the Restrain Street Bridge, there's a couple significant ones right along that main road. That could cause a very serious accident and I believe should be corrected as a priority over new sidewalks. These are potential liabilities for the homeowner and/or the city. I believe this would be a better use of our tax dollars. In summary, we as residents of Willow Lane would like to work with the city to address the drainage issues on Willow Lane and run underground cables as part of the resurfacing work to make it a long-lasting, cost-effective repair and improve the homeowner's property and make the road safer. I would want the city to prioritize new sidewalks on the most beneficial, highly-traveled areas for the greatest safety improvement impact. I would want the city to prioritize repairing existing sidewalks over installing new sidewalks on Willow Lane or elsewhere, and I want the Common Council to vote no on extending sidewalks on Willow Lane. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baggett. Could we get that list so that I could turn that into the Engineering Department to make sure that we have those as well? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Give that to Debbie.
Hi, Jeanette Baggett, 848 Nicolay Boulevard, Manassas. I live on the corner of Nicolay Boulevard and Willow Lane. My husband and I are opposed to having the sidewalks on Willow Lane. One reason is the sidewalk would be too close to our sunroom, and they would have to remove one, maybe two, 15-year-old trees. We also have a sanitary sewer line in our driveway that would be in the way. We've lived here for over 25 years. Sidewalks are not needed due to low traffic, and it's a waste of money that could be better spent on drainage problems on Willow, repairing existing sidewalks, putting electrical lines underground, fixing potholes, or bringing down the debt. We would like you to vote no on the sidewalks. They're just not needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baggett. Is there anyone else this evening?
Bill Shepherd, 398 Willow Lane. I live on the west side of Willow Lane, so this project would not directly affect me. I do want to support, to express my support for my neighbor. It's a project that is really unnecessary, given the low traffic of Willow Lane. I don't know what pot of money this comes out of, but we're always in need of more money for more projects. Certainly drainage on Willow Lane is a problem. I hope you vote no on this project of adding more sidewalks on Willow Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Diane Ferraro. I live at 355 Willow Lane, and I am really excited to talk tonight because I think this is a unique opportunity for Manassas to be foresighted and think about the future generations because these problems that we're talking about with the sump pump, and that is one of my main concerns, is that this water issue has existed over 60 years because that's how old my house is. It had gotten so bad, at one point, one of the owners was obligated to put a second sump pump in there, and all's we're doing is recycling the water. So I think this is an opportunity for a city council to have this foresight, to plan for our future, to take care of a problem that's existed for a long time, and not to pass the buck on future generations because it's not going away unfortunately. I took some pictures of my backyard. If anyone's interested to see, we are only January the 7th, and it is flooded already. It involves eight homes, or six homes directly in between it. There's a little river that's flowing. Would someone like to see them, by any chance?
You could forward those to the Director of Public Works if you'd like tomorrow, and then we'll have a copy of them.
Do you want to see what now, or just wait?
Well, it's going to be pretty hard to see them on your phone, but...
Okay, I will do that.
Certainly, we'd like to see them.
So I think our dollars would be wisely spent to fix problems that exist, such as the erosions of the road. It also creates a dangerous surface in the road because there is slime in the summertime. It's also a breeding ground for mosquitoes. I mean, the issues are quite significant. It also decreases the property value when you see this ruining the streets and the water flowing and the slime and people falling and getting hurt. And I'm sure at some point soon, I will be able to float a canoe between those six houses. So I'm not too sure what the DNR thinks about this, about standing water like this. And I'm going to contact them and try to find out. So I'm just simply asking that we use our tax dollars wisely by addressing these concerns. It's money that we need to use to enhance our property and enhance the roads in Manassas, to free them of the standing water. The utilities would be another thing that we could wisely use money to bury those utility lines instead of, if you're doing the street like this, you're going to take out the poles, move them, and put them up back again. This is an antiquated system that is no longer viable in our society today. If we want our community to have a certain look and feel to it, to go back to the nature, take care of those utility wires and bury them instead of repositioning poles, it doesn't make any sense, quite honestly, and it also is a problem for our trees. We want trees to grow and be beautiful. If the lines are in the way, the trees have to be cut or destroyed half the time. So we know that's a big issue for that. So, you know, that would be an excellent way to use our money wisely to improve issues like this. And then also digging up, if we had put a sidewalk in, it's my understanding that the aprons of the driveways would have to be dug up and reinstalled. So what kind of money are we saving there if we're digging something up to take it apart and put it back together? I mean, it just, it seems like there's a cascade of waste that is really unnecessary. So I also am opposed to the sidewalk, and I request that we would look at other ways to use our money wisely to have a future vision for the generations of Manassas citizens. So I appreciate your time, and who do I send the pictures to then?
You can send them to me via emails on our website.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Ferraro. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Shannon Kennedy, and I live with Bill Shepherd on the east side, actually. I couldn't say anything better than what's been said before, other than I'm here in support of having you vote to oppose putting sidewalks. I'm also speaking for my mother, my 85-year-old mother, who's moving back into the community and purchased a home on Willow, 360 Willow Lane. And when I told her about the construction and about the sidewalk being built, she kind of looked in dismay at the disruption it would be. She's coming in to get settled into another phase of her life, and we sure wouldn't want that to be uprooted. However, so I'm in support of my neighbors here. It's a phenomenal neighborhood, and I'd like you all to oppose the sidewalks.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy.
My name is Thomas Mace. I live at 411 Lake Road, and about half that property is on the east side of Willow Lane. I also lived at 340 Willow Lane from 1952 until 65 with my parents, and my dad actually put through the road to Kai Street, so I'm kind of a long-term resident. I thoroughly support my neighbors in opposition to the sidewalks, and I won't belabor any more of the points because I think they've said them so well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mace.
Hi, I'm Jack Frye, 318 Willow Lane, again on the east side. I don't really have anything strongly pro or con about sidewalks in general. However, I do find that there seem to be a lot of ideas floating around that involve the city Public Works, the public utilities, and ideas that are out there for the neighborhood, like perhaps burying electrical utilities and so forth. And I think it seems very obvious to me that it would be good to look at all of those things, all of those potential projects, and all of the participants in the project at one time. So I think, once in a while, it is appropriate to take a small project and kick it down the road just a little bit, to give time to think about all of these different things and be certain where every, give everybody a chance to understand what might go on, give everybody a chance to get their two cents in, and this is one part of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Patrick Locke, and I live at 340 Willow Lane. I'm not any relation to Mayor Joe, so don't hold that against me or funny. 340 Willow Lane, and I'm a summer engineer by training, education, and I'm registered in the state of Wisconsin. And the big thing with the road is 30 years old, okay? And so it lasted 30 years, but since then, we have about five, six, seven houses that had sump pump add since then, 30 years ago. And so with this road lasting 30 years, however, in front of a sump pump, the road there deteriorated, and we lived on Willow Lane for 17 years. So I knew that the city came out every twice, maybe three, three times, just to repair that area in front of a sump pump. So that's not good use of taxpayers' money. And what I think is, I understand, conventional engineering, it won't work, but there is solutions. If you look for a solution, one idea, because the stormwater system is at the end supposedly, but since it's at the end, there are ways that you can make it better. Like, we have the right of way, so you can do something in the right of way. It doesn't have to be exactly underneath the road. So I understand all these things. There's maybe an old concrete pipe. To make it simple, if you use PVC, you know, they flow smoothly. I just suggest that you look into it more. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Larry Redine from 393 Willow Lane. I would just like the Common Council to know that I would like you not to vote for sidewalk on Willow Lane. I'm not sure why it was even brought up. It has not met any of the criteria of the city for sidewalks. I am the one that circulated a petition, and you have a copy of that. There are 19 homes on the west side of Willow Lane. Seven of them have sidewalks that they installed 30 or 40 years ago. There are 12 of us that do not have sidewalks, and I have signatures from 11 of the 12 homeowners not wanting sidewalks in our yards. I wish that you would consider doing something about the stormwater or sump pump water runoff before the street is reconstructed or resurfaced. The section on the south side of Willow Lane is in very good shape, so I think you should take a better look at where you're spending our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redine. Is there anyone else?
My name's Joe Ferraro, 355 Willow Lane. I was here a couple weeks ago when we talked about this, and I was explaining to you that it's a very special neighborhood. It's a very rural-looking area in the city, right next to the lake, and it's beautiful, and I feel that sidewalks would destroy that look. Furthermore, we do have a very serious drainage problem there. I can float a canoe in my backyard, especially in the spring, and that water does go into the street and ruins the street, and if you did a street without repairing the water, you're going to have a street problems again. Much rather see the sidewalk money spent on the drainage issues and perhaps even burying those cables. I encourage you to vote no on sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Kaufman. I live at 347 Willow Lane, and I've been a resident and property owner in Manassas since 2005. I don't want to keep going over and over the points that my fellow neighbors have brought up to you, but I will say that I think Willow Lane does have bigger issues than a sidewalk. Willow Lane doesn't meet the criteria stated in the city code for sidewalks in existing developments. Safety issues, I think that the criteria present in the code is there to highlight potential safety issues, and they're just not there. I have an 11-year-old daughter, and I've never been worried about her riding her bike on our street because of the low traffic. A majority of my fellow property owners on Willow Lane have came together to address the issues and concerns of this sidewalk proposal and create one voice against a policy that makes very little sense for our street and our tax dollars. So I'm just asking you to consider voting against this sidewalk policy on Willow Lane. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Is there anyone else?
How's it going today? 351 Willow Lane, my name's Shadow Pits. I live right across, there's a pond right in the middle of Willow Lane that I've got a really, like, perfect view of that pond. And when I bought my house, I've lived there for three years, a little over three years now. I've got two young kids. One of them's just turned three, and the other one's 15 months old. And since we've lived there, I've had standing water right in front of my driveway, pretty much all spring, all summer, all fall. And what happens is it gets like a green film on it, and my kids, you know how kids are, three-year-old kid and a 15-month-old, they want to get in that water. And bang, 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 they're in there, they're falling in it. My one, my two-year-old, well, he's three now, he's been riding a bike with all training wheels since he's been two. Now he rides an electric dirt bike around, and if we had a sidewalk, he's not going to be in the sidewalk. He's going to be in the road. Like, because my yard, I've got a single lot, and in between mine, Joe, and Diane's house, they've got their sub-pump lines, and there's a tree there. So if he wanted to ride his dirt bike around the house, he can't, he can't do that. And my yard, my lot's 55 feet long and probably like 45 feet from my, from my front door or my garage to the road. So if you put a sidewalk in, you come up 15 feet, because I've got a newer house, my house was built in 2000, and they pre-poured like the sidewalk lines, so I know right where the sidewalk's coming through if it runs that way. And I just recently purchased a boat that is almost 30 feet, the trailer's 30 feet long. And I don't plan on leaving it there in the summertime, but when I want to do work on my, you know, clean it, maintain it, do something to it, I'm going to have to put it in my driveway. And people are going to be right up, if the sidewalk comes there, they're going to be right up, pretty much right on my truck. I have to park my truck in my driveway because it doesn't fit in my garage. And then in the, in the wintertime, too, when I have like in-laws or my mom comes over to help me watch my kids, you're not supposed to park on the street. So like, I'd be losing a big chunk of a small yard that I got. And one of the reasons why I moved to Willow Lane is I'm a country boy. I like, I grew up in the country. I wasn't all for getting a house in the city. I moved up here for work about six, eight years ago, and we, me and my wife got married, and we were looking for a house, and we found the house on Willow Lane. I love, I love like, there's wildlife in that pond, there's turtles, frogs, so my kids, they love it, and they're constantly running across the road. They're not going to be in a sidewalk. And like I say, I'd say over half the people on Doty Island don't even use the sidewalks. And then the one person that's opposed to the sidewalk is 85 years old, and she thinks her taxes aren't going to go up. Well, I pay, my house is assessed at $140,000, I pay $3,400 a year in taxes, and it's, I feel like it's unnecessary to be spending any more money. I don't know if you guys know what the healthcare costs are, is recently to have kids and whatnot. It's pretty ridiculous and way more expensive than when, when you guys had kids. And I feel like spending, spending money for, for a sidewalk, to lose all that property is just unnecessary. And if anybody's concerned about kids getting hit, my kid's in the road more than anybody on the street. You can ask anybody. He's a little daredevil. And I'm not concerned about it. You know, I feel like if you put some slow children at play, some signage on the street, it'd be way better, more, more, I don't know, it'd be way more cost-effective and better. And I'd be concerned, I heard a report that they might be moving the sidewalk closer to the street. What are they going to do with all the pre-existing poured concrete? You know what I mean? There is an expense there. And then what do you do with the people that have asphalt driveways? Do they just put like a piece of concrete in between their asphalt driveway? It's all stuff, and you know, if you've got to move telephone poles and stuff like that. It's just, most of the people that walk on Willow Lane, they want to be by the water, and it's on the east side. So I feel like putting sidewalks in is just a waste of money, and the drainage is a serious issue. So like I said, my, in front of my house, it's wet all, all summer, all spring, all fall, until they start discharging in people's backyards, which is not a good thing either because when you're putting that groundwater, that water behind your houses, guess where that water's going? It's going into our foundations. It's going into Joe's foundation, it's going to my foundation, it's going into probably Robin's and Chris's foundation. You know, it's just, there's a lot of clay by our area, too. Like Willow, Willow Lane's got a lot of clay. I've read, trying to keep grass growing and clay, it's hard, you know? And I've redone my front yard, I don't know how many times, and I don't want to have to do it again, you know? I'd rather spend time with my family and my kids than worrying about reseeding my yard because they want to put a sidewalk in, and it's unnecessary. All right, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Dan Zelensky, 647 Perris Street. Thank you. You're doing a fairly well, good job, because you can tell by how many times I've been up here since I was alderman. And in regards to sidewalks, the happiest day was when they took my sidewalk away. The reason I'm up here is because when I received my tax bill, the taxes on my house stayed relatively stable, but when I looked at the special assessment, there was a special assessment for $130 for my additional container because I live in a duplex. I'm not contesting the fee. The only thing that I'm contesting is... The only thing that I'm contesting is why should one be subsidizing another? Me subsidizing someone or someone subsidizing me for garbage? I wish there was this one set fee for every container in the city. If one thirty is the, the fee that covers garbage pickup for that one container, everybody should be, have a special assessment for one thirty. There shouldn't be subsidizing one way or another for that. I wish this council would take a look at that and see what is the fair fee for garbage pickup in the city of Manassas. And I was elected the spokesman for Perris Street for the one-way street on Broad, or the conversion from a one-way to a two-way on Broad Street, and they're all in favor of having it converted to a two-way for my portion of Perris Street because of the safety hazards that go along with it on our street and on Broad Street, because right now, most people are using it as a two-way street already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zielinski. Is there anyone else this evening? Got two at the same time.
Get the other Zielinski up here. Hi, Alex Zielinski, 894 Second.
I thought they only have five minutes.
Now we get ten. My concern is with, first, on the two-way for Broad Street. I see it as mostly an ease-of-use standard and safety standard, because any time you go down Broad Street, you're gonna run into someone going the opposite way. I lay on my horn every single time and makes them mad, and I get the middle finger, but I'll do that for my city. Second part of that is a recreational standpoint. I run about, I still, even after being an alderman, I still manage to run about thirty-five to forty miles a week. And I mostly go down Broad Street 'cause I'm heading towards the trestle trail, since I live on Second Street. When people use that area, they do not use the sidewalk. I don't know if they're, even if they're walking, running, or biking, they're not using the sidewalk there, and they're going down the street. And it's a one-way street, so when you're on a bike, you're going the wrong way. If we wanna connect our park, in, park, that's our big issue coming forward, is Jefferson Park, we did that expensive survey and blah, blah, blah. If we wanna connect that with the downtown, you gotta have a two-way system there with safety features, so you can ease of use, getting the people down and back. I just see it as a better way to conduct traffic and make it a safer area for recreational use as well. And as far as sidewalks go, I'm a runner, so I see a lot of people using sidewalks in the city, but in a low-use area like that, people would rather go on the street. Especially when I go on sidewalks throughout the city, there's a lot of them that are heaving, like one guy mentioned. We would be better off using our money to fix the sidewalks we have now and then go forward with that. Maybe you guys should pay me money to stake out your sidewalks and find your cracks. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Zielinski.
First off, Stan, Packers did hire Matt LaFleur. Basically, my view hasn't changed as far as a two-way street on Broad that we talked, discussed on December seventeenth. I did see that you guys did try to do some work on it to help improve the safety of it. I still believe, though, that in the last eighteen years I've lived there, that the traffic has only increased and not decreased, and that that intersection of Broad and Racine is still a dangerous intersection. Now, we have a Jimmy John's there. We also have a driveway going into Jimmy John's into the, into the drive-thru, and now you've increased, now you're gonna have people that come around off of Racine Street, they're gonna stop immediately to turn into that short driveway that's your drive-thru. It's not the main preferred route for that drive-thru, but people will be stopping, they'll be backed up waiting to get through that drive-thru, because the people that properly drove through Jimmy John's parking lot are gonna be backed up, and they're gonna be stuck out there on Broad waiting to turn. One of the reasons it would be good to be one-way is they would be able to pull over on, to the far side of Broad Street and wait to turn in to Jimmy John's, thus not impeding the traffic that comes whipping around Racine Street off the bridge and heading east. Right now, I have pictures just today of how our bus stops at my neighbor's and used to park straight, put out its little pole, pick up the neighbor's kid. Now, after so many times that it's been passed, and I've witnessed it by cars, now it has to park diagonally across the whole road to stop traffic so that kid can get on. I feel that that intersection is too dangerous to make it a two-way. Why is that? Is because you are gonna be, you've congested it up now with Jimmy John's drive-thru, okay? Not only that, the reason that the trestle trail, I was told by aldermen, was moved to First Street is to get people away from Broad Street, away from walking, away from bikes. And if you go making it a two-way, now the people aren't gonna be breaking the law anymore. Now they're gonna be adding more bike traffic and walking traffic to that intersection, and I've already been told by aldermen that that's what we're trying to get away from. Even when we put in, in two years, when you go with option J and you put in that median in the middle, you're, now you've congested the traffic down to one lane, now you've backed the traffic up into the roundabout, and now traffic's gonna be impeded when they try to come off of a one-lane road onto Broad Street. If, and then the other point I'm trying to make is, they're still parking where Doc Larson's place is on that side of the street. And when there's a car parked there, you cannot get around, so people whipping around that corner are gonna be throwing on their brakes, 'cause somebody's gonna be stopped to turn into Jimmy John's. That's not cool, okay? We have enough, way too many accidents at that intersection. My next question is, is for the police chief here. Josh told, Josh told me that the police chief said that the reason that's always been a one-way is because of the dangerous intersection and keeping the traffic flowing. So my question to the police chief, I wish that he would answer it tonight, is that your stance? Was that somebody else's stance? Is that currently Manassas' stance on that intersection? And also, how do you feel about it now? Because the proposal tonight is to take a right, right turn only if it turns into a two-way. So why isn't it a right turn only if you're coming from westbound Broad, west side of Broad Street, and you're wanting to turn north onto Racine Street, and you have a building impeding your view? So it's more dangerous to turn north on Racine Street when you're on the west side of Broad. So if you're gonna put a median, a turn lane, and turn it into a two-way on my side of Broad Street, you need to put one on the other side, too, okay? Let's keep, let's, let's control the traffic all the way around that intersection, not just on one side. I think that Manassas thinks, needs, not think about special interests and what a certain group of people want, but think about the safety of Manassas and what is safe for the people of Manassas. Government's always trying to regulate people, so let's regulate safety. If we're gonna regulate anything over the people, let's regulate what keeps people safe. And I don't see that. And, and then my other question to police chief is, is this council here tonight saying it's okay for people to pull out of an underground parking garage and flash their lights right into my windows? So I wanna know, can people go and shine spotlights in people's windows? Because that's what's being advocated here tonight, that that's okay to do. So if you could please address that, I'd really appreciate it, okay? So I ask that you would do what's best for Manassas. I am the number-two person on that street that it would benefit me to have a two-way street. But I know what's best for our city in the last eighteen years regarding that intersection, and I live it. I don't live at the other end of the block and around the street and around the corner and what makes me happy, okay? One-way street means you don't drive your bike the wrong way on that street. Why? Because the trestle trail's not there. You move over and get over there off that street and off that dangerous intersection. Let's, let's create safe intersections for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Is there anyone else this evening?
Sandra DeBille Taylor, 545 Broad. I told myself I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but first, I'm a little jealous. All the, all the meetings I come to, no one's ever applauded. I do wanna do a few kudos tonight. I'd like to thank Alderman Kruger, Kruger, for including a public comment portion on the Board of Public Works agenda. That was never there before, 'cause I always ran out of time. I also wanna thank Sam Schrader for his memo regarding the proposed fourteen and the timeline, because there are certain pub, public hearings that are required, and he has it spelled out, and trust me, I saw him in the paper. So we're all on board with that. Now, I would like to comment on the Public Works Facility proposed design. It was, I really wish these meetings were posted properly on the website calendar. No one really knew that meeting was taking place until they read halfway down the agenda for six o'clock for tonight, and then it mentioned that you were having a meeting at 5:30. So most people, there were two of us here, I don't know if anyone else would've showed up, but most people had no idea that there was a 5:30 meeting. Then I cannot leave without saying something about Broad Street. I basically was here to see how the council reacts to residents of Willow Lane, because people and the residents of Broad Street and our opposition to the bridge, our opposition to the roundabout, and various, depending on what end of Broad Street you live on, the different opinions they have on the one-way and two-way street, and basically, our voices have never been heard. And people really don't listen to us. And I'm curious to see how much you're gonna listen to the residents of Broad, of Willow Lane. At this point, for years I've wanted Broad Street two-way, and you all know that, but I respect my neighbors that wanna keep it one-way, because we're on different ends of the block. Regardless, the number-one thing is safety. The speed on that section all the way down to DePere Street is ridiculous, as much as anyone wants to argue. Now, the people of Willow Lane mentioned, someone mentioned having a traffic study. There's never been yet a traffic study recently for conversion of this street. I asked for that when it was first proposed. There was a traffic study done several years ago, but not recently. I'm curious as to what's gonna happen with the parking. I think that's one of the major concerns, because at that time, a lot of the residents were told the parking was gonna be eliminated, and that's why a lot of people were opposed to it being converted to a two-way street. But as Alex Zielinski mentioned, for every car that does the speed limit or speeds, I see just as many cars going the wrong way, so. The other thing I did wanna mention was, and they brought it up also with Willow Lane, with the underground utilities. I totally agree with that. I think when the Manassas High School was rebuilt, when the Boys and Girls Club was rebuilt, when we have major projects, and now the Public Works Facility, or we have tearing up an entire road, that is the time, we're putting in new water main or new util, you know, replacing things, when they did it on the other side of Broad Street, that is the time we need to put in the underground utilities. Yes, it's costly, but it's not gonna get any cheaper, and it's so unsightly. If you look back at some old photographs, they haven't changed from a hundred years ago. We still have the same poles. And the first time there's a strong storm and a pole goes down, everybody says, well, this wouldn't happen if it was underground utility, and the aesthetics would be much nicer, so. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? And you made it in exactly five minutes. Seeing that there are numerous people here for two topics, if there's no objection from the common council, I'd like to move forward to those two items. Is there any objections to moving forward to that? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item J, the heldover business. The recommend, recommendation of the approval of sidewalks on the west side of Willow Lane? Yeah, I just asked if anyone had any objections, and no one said anything, so.
Sorry, he's asking me a question.
Oh, sorry. I just thought since we have a whole crowd of people here, it'd be nice to do those two items first. Does anyone wish to start? Motion or, motion or discussion on that item? Alderman Kruger?
Oh, for safety discussion.
Oh, we've got the, it's set up differently tonight. I can only have one mic on, which helps with the translating, so that's a good thing, I guess.
If you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to ask you a few questions first, before any motions. Director Adamowski, there were a few issues on drainage, and then the big one is whether or not the city policy, if this street actually meets the policy set up for sidewalks within the city. Could you please go over there and explain whether or not, if, if this particular area does meet the qualifications or if it is underqualified for sidewalks?
Need to wait for it to get on. So the city's comprehensive plan states that any time that there is roadway work on a road without sidewalks, that we will investigate putting sidewalks or bikes, bicycle paths in that location. So that is why we recommend them. The ordinance, as it's written for sidewalks, we do not meet any of the warrants where we would need to have a sidewalk. However, the Board of Public Works and council does have the ability to recommend sidewalks regardless of those warrants. So it is part of our comprehensive plan to have pedestrian and bicycle facilities looked at for every road that we redo. That is why we are looking at it. Because we are not having a specific warrant, you know, it is up to the council or Board of Public, or council to determine whether or not the sidewalks are actually added.
And I guess to add to that a little bit, I don't know if you have more questions, Steve, we'll come back to you in a minute, but we've been hearing a lot about safety in all of our CAP meetings, all of our construction meetings, and whenever there's a street that the sidewalk abruptly ends in the center of the street, those are the areas that we're looking at. And this was one of those areas, so we did recommend bringing that forward to the council. I think it's our obligation to bring that forward to the council, and the council to look at it and see if they decide that safety is an important concern in that area. Last year about this time, we decided that we needed a separate bike and ped facility on the other side of the island, because it wasn't safe to be walking in those areas. So I mean, it, it's something that we should consider. It's not something that we necessarily have to do, but I think it would be remiss of all of us at the staff level when we have a sidewalk that ends mid-block to not at least bring that forward and say, should we continue that? And do we think that it, there's a safety concern or not in those areas? Did you wanna talk some more, Steve?
I'll let Stan go first.
Okay.
You always want me to go first. That's all right. Mayor, I may be out of order, but a lot of the questions and issues tonight were about drainage problems, which I would hope some of that is addressed with a new street, but it sounds more like issues in the backyards. And I don't know if the street has, if that's a problem with, with that because of the street. And hopefully with the new construction, that that would be something that would resolve that as part of an issue. The city also, and I just want everyone to be aware, we have a program, which no other city has in our area, where we do have, where we can put a drainage system out into your backyard, where it's brought out to the storm sewer, but of course, that's an assessable item, but we split and share in that cost, and that's a really good program. You're talking about your backyards being flooded. I know you wanted to show your pictures. I wish I would've taken pictures, because my backyard was flooded today, too. I couldn't even play with my dog in the backyard. But I think some of the issues that they're raising are actually Manassas' utility issues, the power line issues. Are we addressing that? If you're, do you want me to turn that off?
I can, I'll flip-flop you guys here. We are always...
We always submit all of our roadway plans to Menasha Utilities. They have the final say as far as what they do with their power lines. We do not have any enforcement through the Public Works Department to mandate that they are underground or above ground, so it's up to Menasha Utilities as far as what they do with those power lines.
You don't think that that's something we have control over, but I totally agree with you on that. I think when we get into certain areas, that if power lines, I also think that they don't look so great, and that if we can, when we do these projects, that when we go in, we do it right, that we do everything. Storm sewers, water mains, water laterals, you know, we're dealing with lead pipe issues now, and we have a program helping people with that with the Menasha Utilities. So, it seemed like those were even bigger issues than the sidewalks. Let's see, what else did I have here?[663.43][663.43][applause] Oh, and then some people brought up the issue about aprons, and, I mean, that's just part of the project. It's, it's part of the cost. In most, here's another situation. You're not being assessed for that roadwork either. I want other people to realize that if you lived in Appleton, or if you lived in Nino, or if you lived in Fox Crossing, or some other community, you would have to pay for that. In Menasha, you do pay for it through your taxes, but I also do. And I think that what we have is an outstanding program, so when people say, "Oh, your taxes are so high," this is one of those cases where we all share in the cost to help people out in the city of Menasha. So, when this was in committee, the vote was seven to one, and I'm, I, I would hope that you would respect differing opinions. I'm sure most of you know I'm a pro-sidewalk person. I've grew up, I've born, raised, educated here in the city of Menasha, and I've always had sidewalks, and I think they're very safe. I'm very familiar with Willow, and I probably go down it at least once a week, and there isn't a time that I don't go down there, that I don't see someone walking in the street, or walking their dog, or playing in the street, and it scares me. The great thing is, is it's not that, the traffic isn't that high. But otherwise, I spoke my piece, and I hope we can address these other issues, because I think they are very important. If we can do something with the electrical lines, then we should do that. And I certainly won't want to put in a street if we didn't address the drainage and the sewage, or the storm water issues, and could you address that?[772.82][772.82][applause] Oh, I thought you turned it off.
Yeah, but I can't get his to turn back on. And even though the city attorney is poking me, saying that's not on the agenda, I would like you to just, just comment that, what we have been working on with the drainage and why there's some difficulties with drainage and...
So, we have looked at the drainage on Willow Lane, and we fully are aware that there are major issues with the drainage system out there. However, due to the lake levels being so high in comparison to the road, our storm sewer is extremely shallow. We're only about a foot or two underground at the end of our storm sewer. We have no way of extending our storm sewer past where it currently is. By redoing the curb lines and redoing the roadway, it will improve the drainage. Will it make the, all of the drainage problems go away? No. But it will improve the situation as best as possible. If there's something that we can do to kind of change a couple of small grades, we are definitely looking at that. However, you know, due to the flat nature of Menasha as a whole, high groundwater, high levels of the lake, you know, there are situations where there are not a lot of options that you can actually make something dramatically better.
Mayor, I won't.
Oops.
I won't speak out of order on this one. This does pertain to the sidewalk issue, and I just also want the, the body here to understand that when you get new sidewalks, you're assessed for those. You would have to pay for them. The mayor this year did something different, because he and I have been talking about completing these areas where you have sidewalks, and then it, that, you know, it just stops. And so, he put in the budget to pay for this. The rest of us are paying for that. Otherwise, in other communities, you would be billed for that. So, in this case, with the sidewalks, if they were to be put in, you would have to pay for them.
And to be fair, we did do a small section last year over by Coslo Park in the same way.[909.43][909.43][applause] Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the people from Willow area to come out tonight. It's very supportive of your community, and it speaks volumes. When this first was on the agenda, I was the only one to vote no. I did not think it was the right thing to do at the time with moving utility poles, doing other things that added expenses that we just do not need. Josh Radomski just answered the question about the sidewalks. It was going to be, would this help with the drainage? He can't give you a for-sure answer. My question to him, can we take the existing sidewalks away if we do this construction? If we vote no on sidewalks, can we take the people with the sidewalks? Can we have those removed?[957.43][957.43][applause]
The, the council would have to give me direction to remove those sidewalks. I cannot make that decision myself. That would be something that would have to come from council to remove existing sidewalks.
And also, too, when 80 to 90% of the people do not want it, I don't know why we, they vote for us to be up here. They vote for our, our positions, and they're a constituents, and we want to listen to what they have to say. So, I will not be voting for sidewalks on Willow Lane.[1001.19][1001.19][applause] I just don't think it's a necessary expense.
You don't have sidewalks in your neighborhood.
Yeah, I don't have sidewalks where I live. And as Alderman Seven stated, I do have a sewer-drained system in my backyard, four houses adjoining to it, and it, and it really helps with the flooding situation in the spring. So, I appreciate your support and have you come out and talk to the people, and us, Aldermen, and we'll hopefully make the right choice. Thank you.[1026.63][1026.63][applause]
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the issues that I'm having a hard time with on this is that we have, we do have policies, we have procedures that we're supposed to follow. And if we start running the city on a la carte basis, I mean, as Alderman Grady just stated, well, how about if the next road over in my neighborhood doesn't want sidewalks? Are we going to allow the sidewalks to be taken out then?[1055.86][1055.86][applause] It's, I don't know, we, we have policies, we have procedures that we have in place that we're supposed to be following. And if we, if we did this, when it was about six years ago, had people come up and not want a trail, even though it was put in the plans and the whole nine yards. I mean, I, I just don't want to be going down a road where all of a sudden, every time that there's something happening within the neighborhood, each neighborhood's going to be different. 80 to 90% of the people don't want to pay the tax rate that there is right now. Some of them don't want the recycling costs. I mean, we can't run a city on a la carte policy either, though. I mean, we have to either stick to a policy, or, or there's no sense in doing a lot of this stuff. I guess staff could have taken care of this otherwise, without us even voting on it, if it's going to be determined by each neighborhood whether or not they want sidewalks, whether or not they want two-week, or two times a week recycling, or, or if they want more garbage, or a ton of other stuff. I mean, I just, I have a hard time with this, doing it this way. I'd like to hear from other Aldermen, though.
Alderman Grady? Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to add, I think, I think the first gentleman that came up was a Jim. You had a map of all the areas that don't have sidewalk? Well, then, then everybody has to have a sidewalk in Menasha, then. I mean, if you're going to say they have to have it, why, other communities don't. You can't mandate, you know, there's certain things where you have them, you don't have it. So, I'll just leave it at that.
Alderman Seven?
Yeah, Ted, I'd like to address that. Because, because we have this all the time, the feeling was, is that when we go in and make the improvements to be cost-effective, when we're going to do an entire street or storm sewers, that that's the time you would do that. So, that, that is our policy, that we are supposed to, when we go in, put in new streets and that, that we're supposed to follow through with correcting the area. Now, I believe that area was changed after the fact, that I think they were empty lots before the street was put in, and then the homes were put in afterwards. I think the first homes were there before the other ones, and that's why the sidewalk was there. So... But yes, that, that will be the, no? Okay. That will be the process, then.[1207.75][1207.75][applause]
Alderman Procell. Oh, we'll go. All right. Thank you. The mayor's, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you get to do that.
Yeah.
Oh, you're supposed to. Oh, I did, no. All right. Thank you very much, Alderman Seven. Thank you. After talking to some of the people on the street, one person, actually, I found out about the history of Willow Lane, and find it kind of odd that Willow Lane is the only street on the island that was never given curb and gutter, and it just was kind of left to be by itself. And I appreciate all the people coming up here and voicing their opinions, and I was kind of told about how those houses put in their, their own drive, their own sidewalks themselves as they moved in, those four, six houses. And actually, yeah, yeah, six or seven houses put their own sidewalk in. There was no sidewalk required on Willow Lane at the start, I believe. I don't, and so I will be voting no sidewalks for you. And I, I don't have, I have voted in Southfield, and I don't have sidewalks either, so you took a bunch of pictures, Mr. Baggett, of Southfield, so I don't want to be next to having a sidewalk. So, thank you very much, and thank you.[1302.01][1302.01][applause] So, now both of us get a...[1304.41][1304.41][laughter]
Last, someone made a motion while I was gone in the restroom. We are still looking for a motion. Alderman, oh, did you want to make the motion, Alderman Nichols, or did you want to speak? No?
I'll speak.
Go ahead.
Do I have the floor, Mr. Mayor?
You do, yes.
Thank you. All right. I usually don't speak on topics until there is a motion on the floor, following Robert's rules of order, but since we're having an open discussion here, I will take the opportunity. About a month ago, I voted to simply move this topic out of committee, as I continued to have conversations with the folks affected with, by this proposal. I also took some time to review the ordinance that we have in place, as is outlined in the memorandum that we have in our packet, the points that are provided. Section two says that sidewalks would be mandatory on streets with a total density of greater than 3.5 units and average traffic, daily traffic, greater than 500 vehicles per day. So, while this neighborhood does meet the density requirements of 4.05 units per acre, we can rest assured that it does not meet the traffic requirement of 500 vehicles per day. The third section that was pointed out and referenced, sidewalks shall be mandatory on any side of an individual, individual block where 50% or more of the length of said block has sidewalk. Willow Lane currently has 33% sidewalk length, so there again, it does not meet the requirement outlined in the ordinance. And the third thing pointed out is that nothing in the above provisions would prohibit the Board of Public Works from requesting sidewalk installation if a traffic engineering or any combination of pedestrian counts and traffic volumes demonstrate a hazardous condition which would warrant sidewalk installation. That suggests to me that there would need to be evidence for the necessity of sidewalks, and so far, we don't have that evidence. There's also a section of the ordinance, and it's at the very end, and it says that except in subdivisions currently under construction, streets without sidewalks, as of the effective date of this ordinance, shall not be required to have sidewalks installed. Willow Lane has been around for a very long time. Part of it does not have a sidewalk, and this suggests to me that it would not be required to have a sidewalk at this time. I also reviewed the plans that were, the drawing that was in our packet a couple weeks ago when we were at Board of Public Works. And as sidewalks are proposed right now, it would require the removal and re-installation of six utility poles, and also possibly a fire hydrant. Those things are clearly marked on our drawing. The sidewalk, as is proposed, would, or could possibly present some real grading problems when it comes to the aprons of people's driveway, given that they are so close to the street. And it would also require many, if not all driveways, to be dug up and redone to meet grade if a sidewalk were to be installed. And I did contact Menasha Utilities and inquire about the cost of moving utility poles, and they indicated to me a rough estimate of about $25,000 to $30,000. And although that would not be taxpayer money, it is ratepayer money, and we are the same people. And then in further conversations, it, it became clear to me that what we had in our packet was probably a plan. It wasn't a for-sure thing, and I think you sort of indicated that by saying that there would still need to be engineering work done. We were really, we're still unclear about where a sidewalk would be placed, and even if it is possible. So, that presents a lot of uncertainty in people's minds who have to deal with the situation, and it presents a lot of uncertainty when it comes to establishing the cost of the project. And in listening to the folks that came here this evening, once, a couple of things become pretty clear, I think, and that is, the majority of folks think that there is a greater problem that needs to be addressed, and they're hoping that it can be addressed efficiently and effectively. And the reason that they're interested in having that addressed is because we want this road to last at least 30 years. And in order for that to even remotely be possible, we have to do our best to address the stranish, the drainage issue of water standing in the street. And many residents that came here and spoke this evening also indicated that, they indicated here and in their conversations with me, that they might be willing to meet with Public Works and engineering, to help everybody gain a better understanding of what happens with water on this road, and be willing to explore different ways and different methodologies of dealing with this issue, that, and making sure that we have explored the options before making a decision. perhaps public engagement in these sorts of projects, and helping determine the best path forward, making sure that different and all scenarios are reviewed and analyzed before making a decision, and taking a more comprehensive approach to, approach to those projects, so that we don't need to revisit the street again for, you know, 30 to 50 years. I think these residents have expressed an interest and a motivation to make sure that those sorts of things can happen. And many of us are aware of the backyard drainage situation that, and program that you addressed. And one of the things that I've learned through this project is that not every street comes with the same infrastructure underneath it, and so sometimes, different approaches... And so sometimes different approaches need to be investigated to see how we can deal with those situations. And so after engaging in several meetings with the residents and Public Works staff as well, I don't think that now is the right time to move forward with sidewalks and would really urge the common council and the city to try a different approach with this project. Thank you. And the sidewalks.
Steve, you were next. Alderman Krueger?
Thank you, Mayor. As I said, I have issues with the a la carte policy. But as Alderman Nichols was actually quite elegant in what she was saying, on the policy aspect, it really doesn't even meet the requirements that the city states for sidewalks to begin with. The residents don't obviously want it. It's not going to do anything for drainage as far as the director was stating. And again, out of all the different areas that were put into the... Into our policy, it really doesn't meet it except for the density quality, or the density for sidewalks. And based on that, I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion to remove the sidewalks from the Willow Lane project.
Here's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Savnick?
As I stated before, I think it's actually a big mistake not to put these sidewalks in. But I'd rather use those resources to address the other issues that I think are more pressing. And that is the drainage issue and the power lines and that. And I also want to compliment your Alderman for doing a very good job of stating the case for you. Hope you remember that in April for her. So that would be my feeling. That's why I second the motion. Initially, I would have voted to have the sidewalks. But I really think that it does dress up a neighborhood. It does address a lot of other issues. But I'd hate to push something when you have 90-plus percent of the people who don't want it. So I would ask that the rest of my colleagues follow us on this and that we follow through on the things that Alderman Nichols said, that maybe we address these other issues, use those resources towards that. Because I know if I lived there, I would want those things taken care of first before sidewalk.
I just want to comment for the members of the public that the city would not take into account underground power lines. If you wanted to request the power lines be placed underground, you should petition Minasha Utilities. I'm not sure if there is a cost to the residents to do that. I don't think we've ever done that before in a neighborhood. So we would have to look and see if that would be assessable or non-assessable. But that would be the place to start that out if you wanted to move forward with that. In fact, there was a case on Lake Road, and we did special assess for the underground utilities there. Alderman, oops, I'm sorry. Let's let Josh go first, and then we'll go back to Mark.
I just want to point out that just because we don't necessarily spend the money on the sidewalks does not mean that that money goes directly to the storm funds that would take a, you know, some sort of a adjustment. There also may not actually be an engineering solution to some of those drainage problems short of tearing up the entire neighborhood. So I just want to... I don't want to have, you know, expectations that are not met. I want to put it forward that we have looked at the drainage. And there is not a lot that we can do to improve that situation using city infrastructure, you know, short of reconstructing the entire roadway. And that would be an excessive expense at this point. So I just want to put that out there, that this... The drainage situation, we will do what we can. However, there are severe limitations with that project.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have questions here. And I still want to ask them. Even though two Aldermen changed their minds, I still want to ask my questions. And these were the reasons I was asking them and for my vote for not putting the sidewalk in. So I'm going to go through and ask them anyway. So Josh, do you know when Willow Lane was put in?
I do not know the exact date, but it has been there for a very long time. I know that the road was reconstructed or redone in 1988, I believe. And this same sidewalk issue came up then, so...
Okay, thanks. I got a couple, few questions for you, Josh. So, next one is, do you know why there is only a partial sidewalk on Willow Lane?
I do not know. The history that I know is that the city did install some of the sidewalks to a certain property. And then that property owner came to council... Came to a council meeting and fought against it. And the council obliged to his request to not have sidewalks extend past his property.
Okay. Another one is, why are there no sidewalks in the Woodland Hills area?
That was, again, resident complaints that sidewalks and the path are not added to that subdivision. You know, that pathway actually was going to be a path from Oneida Street to County Highway LP. Yeah, that trail. And unfortunately, without that subdivision, now that trail is... It's going to be a lot more difficult to get through.
Okay, thanks. All right. Another one, Josh, is the... On the Chapter 2 Streets and Sidewalks, does it say anywhere in there that a sidewalk has to go in?
It does not. Our comprehensive plan does state that we have to look at those options, which is what I brought forth to the council. It does not ever state, as I stated in my memo, that it does not state that sidewalks have to go in.
Okay. And I got this here with me. But I want to double-check with the attorney. So Pam, in the Chapter 2 Streets and Sidewalks, is there anywhere in there that a sidewalk has to be put in?
Do you want to comment, Attorney Captain? Oops. Now we'll see if that one...
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. So another question for the attorney. If an area within the city does not have a sidewalk and somebody gets hurt, hit by a car or anything, is the city liable because there's no sidewalks there?
Attorney Captain?
Assuming we were not involved in it, the city would not be responsible. This would be a legislative decision. So legislative decisions are... Cities are exempt from liability based on legislative decisions.
Okay, thank you. Just one last point that I wanted to make in my reasoning force. I'm not pro-sidewalk or pro-against sidewalks. I look at the issue of it. Is there... Why isn't there a sidewalk? Why put a sidewalk there now? Sometimes roads just don't need a sidewalk. And I see my friend out there, Ms. Kennedy, Shannon Kennedy, that remember very well, the road going to the Lighthouse in Nina. That does not have a sidewalk. And that should not have a sidewalk. So to me, there's... It depends on the area and if it looks like it just does not need a sidewalk. So sidewalks, I just wanted to make a... People, some are talking about safety. Sidewalks are more safe. Not necessarily sidewalks are not necessarily safe always. And that's because depending on the size of the terrace, and if there's a narrow terrace, which there's a lot of them in the city, and you have large trees planted on that terrace, and it wouldn't take you long just to walk up and down the street here, and you'll find a chunk of cement that is raised. So to me, that is more of a safety hazard for somebody walking, running, whatever, tripping on even an eighth inch of that raised concrete than there is... than there would be not having a sidewalk and somebody walking in the road. So I just wanted to ask these questions for... And I know a couple Aldermen changed their minds. But I was going to be voting no for the sidewalk, and these were my reasons why. So thank you.
Seeing no further comment. Could you read the motion back, please?
This is what I... Just to remove sidewalks from Willow Lane reconstruction, is that correct?
There we go. Except for Director Radomski wants to make one more comment.
Can I just get clarification? This motion would just remove them from the ongoing project and not have us remove the actual sidewalk from the remaining 550... Okay, I just want a clarification before we go forward.
Maybe we should put that in the motion.
He said sidewalk project. Would you like sidewalk project?
Yeah, just so in the future. There we go. Seeing no further discussion. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Oop, I'm sorry, Becky, did you want to speak yet before?
I just wanted to clarify that there is a motion to remove sidewalks from Willow Lane reconstruction project. And so that everyone needs to recalculate in your mind how that equates to your vote.
So you are voting... If you vote yes to this, you're voting to not include sidewalks in the project. If you vote no for it, then we take another vote if this fails. Sure. Oop. I don't know if I can even do you.
Thank you. Motion carried on, roll call 7-1.
Having a few concerns with the microphones. Thank you for coming this evening. We are going to move on then to Ordinance 23. It's an ordinance repealing and recreating Title 10. And it's related to the one-way or two-way section of Broad Street. Well, we had people here for that as well, so... Alderman Krueger?
We're on K-1, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'll make the motion for Ordinance O-23-18 and ordinance repealing and recreating Title 10, Chapter 1, Article B, Section 10, 1-13 of the Code of Ordinances, One Way Streets, introduced by myself and recommended by the Public Works.
Is there a second? So motion and second by Alderman Langdon. Discussion, Alderman Taylor?
I want to give a little history on this. The reason we had the one-way system in Minasha is back in the 1960s, the state of Wisconsin mandated that we had to have our driver's test entering and exiting a one-way system.
That is not the case. We've researched this, and we can find no documentation that says anything about that. It was part of a one-way pair, one being Broad Street, the other being First Street. But we can find no documentation.
Yes, and that's why we take on the driver's test at the library Tuesdays in Minasha and Thursdays in Nina at the police station upstairs in the court system. And Nina also had created a one-way system just outside of the police station there. So the purpose of that was to enter and exit a one-way system. And the driver's test was taken on the 500 and 600 block of Broad Street and also on DePere and 500 and 600 block of First Street, where the driver's tests were conducted until they moved them to Appleton and then moved them out to the Double-O where the new DOT is out there. So that's kind of the background and the history on the driver's test here in Minasha.
Any further discussion? Yes?
I'd like to make an amendment to this ordinance that we allow all movement at the corner of Broad and Racine Street on the east side of the street. And I would like to hear from the Department of Public Works Director whose unanimous consent to hear why we only want the right turn at that intersection.
This ordinance does not talk about traffic control at the intersection of Broad and Racine. It only talks about... All it does really is removes Broad Street from the one-way streets. So that would be something...
But it does show that going to this... Is that coming back at another time then, Mayor? The restriction on that?
Our plan was to create the... Director Radomski, would you mind?
But by creating the two-way system, we're changing a... We're going to add a right-hand turn to the system.
Director Radomski?
That is correct. We were not going to allow all movements at Racine Street from Broad Street.
And why was that?
What was that?
Why was that?
That is because the police chief had expressed some concerns over left turns from Broad Street onto Racine Street.
But the manual doesn't state any problem with that, does it?
What was that?
Your manual, as Director Radke always referred to as manual, there's no...
I don't know what manual he... I mean, per...
Is the engineering manual on the vision control?
There would be nothing in there that would prevent it. However, we do know that in two years, the right-hand turn or the left-hand turn and through movements will be eliminated by the DOT because they felt that those movements were unsafe with that intersection.
And but 25 feet to the north coming out of Jimmy John's, you can make any turn you want. That's not unsafe at that point, is that correct?
That is not an intersection. That is a driveway. It's a different situation. We will also be monitoring that situation once it's put in.
By... What do you mean by monitoring that?
We may require them to take right-hand turns out of there with the extension of an island when the Racine Street Bridge comes out. We need to look at how things are... You know, sometimes you need to just let it play out for a year or two to, you know, figure out what the best solution is. But because the DOT has already studied that intersection, we do believe that the right-hand turn only is the best way to go about that.
Okay. And but there's no vision control problem, is that correct? That your engineering manual would state for those turns? It's just an opinion?
It's an opinion based on the DOT's recommendation to eliminate through movements and left turns. And they studied the intersection far more than I have.
Because of the roundabout situation coming.
But they... Even with the existing conditions, they said that it would be, you know, a right turn only.
I did make a motion, Mayor.
There's not a second, Mayor.
Well, you may have been asked it, yeah.
I'm not sure that you can change this section of the ordinance. And I'm not sure if the chief can answer this. I believe that prohibiting left turns at intersections would be an ordinance. Oops, and then we're gonna... There we go.
Exactly. That's where my concern comes in. If you put the pork chop in the road, you're still going to have... It's a non-enforceable pork chop. You have to have an ordinance that would say no left turns or...
So we should bring back an ordinance at the next meeting.
That is correct.
Regarding the left turns, that would be...
I thought that's what we're gonna do.
Correct. If you want it to be legally enforceable. Because otherwise, our folks... If there would be a contested ticket, Pam has nothing to say that we have something on the books.
So Alderman Taylor, if you'd like to bring that ordinance forth at the next meeting, we can have Pam help you draft that ordinance.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Did you have anything else? Okay. Alderman Rappala?
Oh. There you go. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I realize that on the east side of Broad Street, we're going to, at least the, the thought is to just have right-hand turns. So that would be, take a right-hand turn would go to the north, okay? Now, on the west side of Broad Street, are they able, are they going to be able to, that's by the post office and by Wiatzki Funeral Home on that end, on that side, are they going to be able to take a, a right-hand turn and a left-hand turn on that side? If, if we're doing it for one, if we're doing it for the east side of Broad Street that they're only allowed to take a right-hand turn because of safety, wouldn't it be prudent to just have a right-hand turn on the, on the west side of Broad Street to just take a right-hand turn?
So what we just said was that all that this ordinance does is changes Broad Street from a one-way to a two-way street.
Okay.
If you want to restrict turning movements or anything else with that intersection, that would have to come as a separate ordinance. It's a separate section. And Alderman Taylor is planning on bringing that back at the next meeting. So you and him might want to get together and talk about what you want to see for turning movement restrictions.
At Jimmy John's, yes.
And you, not at Jimmy John's, just the intersection. And then you, you could bring that jointly forward at the next meeting.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Sure. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? No, I don't know where the Wiatzki Funeral Home is. Motion carries eight, zero. Since we're having problems with the mics tonight. Okay. Now we're gonna go back to the beginning.
Here, where are we?
Three-minute recess.
Is there any objection to a three-minute recess? Seeing none, we'll, we'll return at 10:2. They're going to call the meeting back to order and we're moving back up to the top again. We're on item F, report of Department head staffing consultants. Minutes to approve in communications, I mean minutes to receive in communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we receive minutes A through E and communications F through K.
There's a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The consent item, agenda has two items this evening, the minutes to approve from the common council meeting of December 17th and the Board of Public Works recommendation for the approval of the request of the owners of 535 Fountain Way for reimbursement of $576 for sidewalks. Is there, does anyone wish to have these items separated? Otherwise, is there a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Seeing that the one is only 576, I think we can take it up on the consent agenda. So I'll move at this time for the minutes of the common council, 1217 of this year and the Board of Public Works recommendation to give the owner reimbursement of $576 at 853 Fountain Way.
There's a motion and second by Alderman Grady. Alderman Ted Grady? If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight, zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for December 20th through January 1st. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of December 20th through Jan, December 20th, 2018 to January 3rd, 2019 in the amount of $1,341,041.51.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight, zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period as listed under approved in the police department's memo dated January 2nd, 2019.
Here's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight, zero.
Item three is the Anita Manasha Sewage Commission's claim with Wisconsin Security Insurance Fund. I don't know if Attorney Captain would like to comment on this first since it hasn't been on the agenda for a while. And then we could accept motions or comments.
The recommendation from the Nina City Attorney and myself is to accept the offer from the Wisconsin Security Insurance Funds Guarantee Association of Wisconsin of $223,125. And that would also include future distributions from the home insurance company estate. You may recall that it wasn't too long ago that we were here and the motion was to accept the $250,000 offer and settlement, which was approximately half of what was being requested. And when the outside counsel went back to finalize the paperwork, then the WSIF had brought up an issue with regard to the current litigation of the home insurance company because that actually is not settled yet. So that's the request.
So is there a motion or any questions for the attorney? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to accept the offer of $223,125 from the Wisconsin Security Insurance Funds Guaranty Association of Wisconsin and including assignment to rights of Nina Manasha Sewage Commission to future distribution from the home insurance company estate to resolve the Nina Manasha Sewage Commission claim filed with WSIF.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call seven, one.
Item four is the approval of a purchase order for the video equipment. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the approval of the purchase order for our video equipment.
There's a motion and a second, so if, as long as it's as per the memo? Okay. So the dollar amount is $24,647. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I contacted Patrick James this morning to have a conversation about the life of this equipment and the life of our current equipment. Currently, we're at 15 years on what we have and we're only eligible for second market parts at this point. Based on his research and in talking with the vendor, he expects 10 to 15 years on this equipment. We know that technology changes at a quick pace these days and that life expectancy is always a question. And then I also took into consideration what, the amount of the loan, the interest and the time of the loan. And I talked with Director Jacobs about that a little bit. Director Jacobs, what length of loan would we be looking at for such a purchase?
I don't know if I can turn everyone on here at the same time. There you go.
Okay, thank you. If we, this was, this was intended to be in the CIP borrowing program for 2019. And if we do plan on going up with a 15-year borrowing issue, which this equipment would be included in that along with all the other projects that were adopted and approved by the council back in November, the rough, the amount of interest would be somewhere close to about $10,000 across the, which would be an additional charge on top of the principal amount. So it'd be a little less than additional $10,000 of interest paid out over 15 years. If we were to have gone with, say, a 10-years borrowing amount for this, it would be somewhere a little less than $7,000 of interest. So the interest amount would be roughly about $7,000 of additional interest that would be going towards the cost of the purchase of this for borrowing over 10 years or somewhere a little less than $10,000 for interest added to this for, over, for borrow over 15 years.
Thank you for that. So that extra $7,000 to $10,000 on this equipment over the lifetime of it is of concern to me. That is extra money that we would be paying. And then at that point, we'd be looking at doing something different once again. And as you'll recall, this is one of the items that I made an amendment during the budget process to not borrow for and levy instead for those reasons. And so it's for those reasons again that I will be voting against this particular proposal. Now, if we thought, if we reconsidered this and thought about setting aside $10,000 over the course of the next three years to purchase something, I could support something like that. We have done that for other things in the past. But to borrow for this when we could have paid upfront and then extend the money, the expenditure, another $7,000 to $10,000 because of interest, I have a hard time with that.
Alderman Sevenek?
I wouldn't totally disagree with you on that. Then we shouldn't build a city garage then either or do any other work in this community because then, see, the, the purpose of doing that is to spread it over the time of its use. So if you feel that the, the time period is spread out too long, that I understand. But I mean, that's why we borrow money. Because it's going to be used over multiple years, you know, over the next 10 or more years. So there's probably another 50, 60 items that we could do that same thing with, you know. So, I mean, I don't totally disagree with what Alderman Nichols is trying to say or do, but I mean, the, the system we have here is inadequate and it's not, it, if you ever watch it, it's awful. I mean, I wouldn't even care to watch it. So, I mean, if we want to have transparency and we want to have open government, this is what we have to do. Manasha's always been the leader. We were one of the first to be televised. We were one of the first to have automation and garbage collection. You know, we're often pioneers and now this equipment is so old. And I don't know, but my guess is that if we even delayed this a little bit, we may not even be able to televise our meetings because we've been told that this thing's barely holding together now. So, I mean, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but we could do that with a lot of other things.
There any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Missing you, Randy. It's okay.
Motion carried on, roll call six, two.
Okay, item J, heldover business, has been taken up. Item K, ordinances and resolutions. Item one has been taken up. Item two is the substitute amendment to R-1418, a resolution adapting the rules of the common council. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to approve the substitute amendment, number one, to R-1418, a resolution adopting rules of the common council and mayor, recommended by the ad hoc protocol, protocol committee.
There's a motion and a second. I'd just like to comment that this does take a two-thirds majority to pass in, within the term of the common council. If it was at the beginning of the term, it would just take a majority. Is there any discussion on any of the items in here? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight, zero.
Item L is appointments. If we, if it's the pleasure of the council, you could accept the resignation and the appointment within one motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for both your acceptance of the resignation and your appointment for the park and rec board.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
I thought we had a policy that, and maybe we need to put it into policy if it's not there, but that when someone is looking to apply for a position, that they give us some kind of resume.
We've had letters of interest in the past, which is what's-
Right. We have a letter that basically states that he like loves Manasha. Well, I think we all do, you know? But we should have, I, I think we need a little bit more, you know, what they can provide to a committee, why they're interested, those kind of things.
Sure. We can, we can ask for a little bit further and if you want to help me with what you're looking for in the guidelines, we can do that. Because giving a description of what their job is probably doesn't typically help us in most cases.
I think it does.
Okay.
Policy's not on the agenda, Mayor, do you mind?
There's no policy, but we can work on one. Any further discussion? Alderman Grady?
Yeah, I just have a question. Thank you, Mayor. When someone does apply, not apply, but, you know, wants to be on one of these boards, volunteering their time, do we go back into a file or look, say, such and such a person asked for this or just to, you know, we look at that, those individuals too? Or do we just, I don't know how the policy works.
There really isn't a policy. These are, this is hard to talk like that. The way these work is these are mayor roll appointments and I can choose pretty much any one that I want, but typically I try to choose people that have something to offer to the committee, whether it's an interest and/or professional background. And then I also try to look to get people from different parts of the community on each committee as well as get people that are different ages, have different life experiences. So usually the park board, we're looking for people that have children that use the parks, people that might have some background in forestry and plant identification, things like that. If we're looking for the RDA, we'd be looking for people with construction experience or architectural experience or things like that. So that's typically how we do it and I do keep a list of people that have asked and there's always a lot of people that want to be on the park board. There are almost never people that want to be on the board of review, the Board of Appeals, the Police Commission, the Fire Commission, things like that. But everyone wants to be in parks, RDA and Plant Commission. So. Any further discussion?
Sandy wants to be on the RDA.
I don't know if I have one for the RDA. I know Sandy did ask to be on the park board and I don't remember if, you might have asked to be on the plant commission as well. So.
Board of Appeals?
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item N, Sandy, you're up. Public comments and any matter listed on the agenda. She asked if we could move this one forward, and I said she might want to talk about something else.
That means I have to give you the mic. Okay. I was so nice, now I have to scold all of you. Okay, as I mentioned earlier, I came to kind of see how the council reacted to the residents of Willow Lane in comparison to the residents of Broad Street, and I got my answer. I've, the people of Willow Lane, I'm glad that they're happy and they got what they wanted. But I just jotted down a few things in the conversation, what I noticed, what was happening. And I never heard anyone call point of order. The wording was sidewalks. Didn't talk about utilities. It didn't talk about telephone poles. Didn't talk about drainage. None of that. And nine times out of 10, if my Alderman goes off track, point of order, first thing that happens. There were two communications from the residents of Willow Lane. One was a petition, one was a letter. Neither ones, well, I have on numerous occasions submitted things directly to the clerk requesting that they be under communications, a letter with my name on. At one point, those used to be included. Mine don't seem to be included, but others are included. So I'm kind of wondering, what's the criteria to get something included in a packet? Another item was with regard to Broad Street. What I heard up here so many times is 90% of the people don't want the sidewalk. It wouldn't be prudent to do this. We don't, you know, we have to listen to what their needs are and make, anything that's happened with Broad Street or the Racine Street Bridge or anything that affects our neighborhood, it's, we're not changing course. We voted for this before. This is what's happening. And I heard Alderman Nichols throughout this whole thing, she changed her mind on this, and it wouldn't be right to go forward. None of that happened with Broad Street. You know, it was, this is a done deal. We can't change things. And even now, talking about the intersection with Racine Street, Alderman Taylor is simply asking, what's gonna happen with that intersection if we now change it over? And there was no timeline now. If we're, if we're doing it now, if we're doing it when the DOT comes through with their roundabout, if it's gonna be done two years from now. In previous meetings, you talked about putting in the pork chop and the median, and the median isn't, none of that, I mean, you didn't listen to any of the residents on Broad Street, for or against the two-way. And Alderman Nichols was on the plant commission that approved the ingress egress for Jimmy John's. But she's opposed to letting the people on Broad Street take a left. So I'm just saying, hypocritical. If you're gonna, I'm happy for the people on Willow Street. I really wish you would treat other districts the same. And it seems like the districts that have the least people showing up to speak are always at a disadvantage. The people with the least income are at a disadvantage, and those with spot zoning or special circumstances. And that's exactly what District Two is. So it's really unfortunate that our voices are not heard. They are not heard. And for the DOT, too, that, you know, you're talking about the Racine and Broad Street intersection, that was never part of the original plan. That plan has changed over and over and over again. Alternate J was, you know, all these things I can pile on top of each other, and Alderman Nichols would always refuse to look at any other options or any other alternatives because this is what you voted on. But tonight, she's more than willing to change things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. And seeing that you're the only one there, I'm guessing there's no one else. And if we have a motion, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.